Passed by majority vote of members present, five yeses, one absent. Okay, we're gonna move on to the scheduled public hearing now. First case on the list is case number 25-19-P, special use permit. Will the applicant please come to the podium?
Mr. Chair, may I speak?
Hold on one second. Go ahead, Ms. Newberg.
I just want to say that Ms. Anderson is nervous. So, you know, it's hard for people to speak. So, she conveyed that to me, so I just want to tell y'all.
Okay.
I'm trying not to be.
That's all right.
Deborah Anderson, 4633 Quiet Acres, 71107. Special use permit is the request. And I am getting older. I had a house. My daughter was in the search for a first-time property. So, we decided to buy a house together and we purchased the property at Quiet Acres, which is 5.7 acres. She lives in the main house and I'm trying to put in a tiny home in the rear yard. So, that's what I'm seeking approval for.
Okay. Any questions, Board?
I do, I have one.
Sure. Go ahead, Ms. Newberg.
We discussed in the work session, even though this is not in our jurisdiction, have you worked with the Health Department on what's gonna be required for your septic system?
Yes, I contacted, I don't remember her name. I contacted her about tying into the current septic and it is not allowed. So, once I have the money to put in my own, I plan on giving the permit and putting in an independent septic system.
Okay. All right. Thank you, that's all I had. There's your answer.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, anybody speaking in favor of the application, please come to the podium. Anybody speaking against the application, please come to the podium. Okay, see a nine. Don't think we need a rebuttal. Board, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the application as submitted.
I second it. Motion passed by majority of vote of members present, five yeses, one absent.
Ms. Anderson.
You're good to go, just pass.
Thank you.
On this end of it. Okay, case number 25-22-P, zoning map amendment, rezoning. Will the applicant please come to the podium?
Good afternoon, thanks for having me. My name's Sam Duggan, Duggan Contractors. Business address is 6030 Lyon Avenue, Suite 500, Shreveport, 71106. Personal address is number four, Boeber Voss, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. I'm here representing Valvin Property Enterprises. He's looking for a zoning change on 10222 Linwood and 10232 Linwood, which are adjoining lots. And there's a lot north of him which doesn't have an address, which is probably 10212, but it doesn't have an assigned address. The 10212 is approved already for C3. He's looking to get approved for C3 for the adjoining lots. There was a meeting down there. There was someone from the MPC there at the thing. What I understand, I was not at the meeting, the recommendations from the surrounding neighbors was good. There, according to the paperwork we got from the MPC, that the permit right now is denied. It also states that there is a residential lot to the south. And actually, to the south is a auto body shop, which is not residential. So, that's something that we'd like to discuss, is that because it is an auto body shop below it, not residential, it's not completely, it's not surrounded on the two sides by residential. It's only residential on the back. And there's a drainage ditch that separates the property on Linwood from the property in the back. The application says that it's gonna be self-storage. It's gonna be actual offices, office space with ADA-compliant restroom, with places for tools and men and supplies. It is four units, 5,000 square foot total, with 1,250 square foot each. There is an existing building on the property that needs to be torn down that does not meet property standards. The proposal with my potential customer wants to do is build up the property, get out of the flood elevation, build a new building, concrete parking in, the appropriate landscape and appropriate signage and appropriate lighting to bring the property up to standard.
So, is the, I've got a question for you. So, your customer, is he wanting to do storage also, or is he just wanting to do these offices that he's gonna run out?
It's office with storage in front of it.
Okay.
It's a small office inside of a building.
Okay.
He is, my potential customer is a construction guy.
Okay.
And he's wanting to move his, one of his, he's renting space now and he wants to move down to a place that he owns and then build some other spaces to offset the cost.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, when we say storage, are we talking about the type of storage I can go to and rent a storage space? Are you talking about storage for his business?
Storage for his business.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, that, Mr. Jean, does that require a C3? If it's storage within the scope of a construction business? I know we- And that's a, a sub or under C2 or?
Well, it is a special use permit under C2, I believe is what we were told earlier. But I think it's actually C3 would require a special use permit.
So, C3 requires a special use permit per construction office?
I don't think so. I think it's a 2 that does. That's just memory, though. Where's the matrix at? Give us just a second. We're conjuring up here on what we're looking at. We're trying to decide on what we're looking at here, 'cause when I was, we went to work session, I'll just take what my question is, we were work session earlier. I'm thinking when they're saying storage, it was the type of storage, like used storage, you know, cubby hole, that type of storage. I didn't ask that.
If you read the list that's in your staff report, contractors' office is not listed by right.
On a C2?
On a C3.
On a C3. What is it? Surely, it can't be a C4.
It's by right in C4, it's special use permit in C3.
And not at all in C2?
Not at all in C2.
What are some of the other things that are allowed in C3?
Let's see. The, where there's a long list, I'll try to hit the highlights. Car wash, community center, financial institution, drive-through facility with a financial institution, furniture, furnishings and equipment sales, gas station, healthcare institution, hotel, a live performance venue. Storage, self-storage facility, climate-controlled is allowed by right. So, if everything's indoor.
So, even if he gets the C3 today, he's still gonna have to come back for a special-
If it is a contractor's office.
If it's a contractor's office. Okay.
What about a used car lot? A car lot?
Okay, vehicle sales, I believe. Is it, the vehicle dealership with outdoor display is allowed in C3?
Those are always contentious.
Yeah.
Those are always contentious for some reason. Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Jean, a spud. Want to talk about-
Small planned unit development.
I want to talk about that for just a second. Knowing that he wants to use this for a construction site, what are our options here today if, for some reason, we do not want to go through the C3? Because that's a really strong zoning and it's just not something, I can't speak for the rest, I can say historically, this board has not leaned toward handing out. What, here's my question. Let me ask it another way. Do we have the ability and authority as this board to change what he's asking for here today and say, if I wanted to make a motion to take this to a spud, can he walk away from here today with that without having to redo his paperwork?
No, he would have to redo the application and we would have to have amenities, would have to have a site plan, which we do not have, because this is a straight-up zoning today. He would have to come back at a future date. And usually, it's hard to do in a 30-day period if you're going to do any type of plan development, because you have to go through the site plan preparation and getting the amenities together.
What is your timeframe on your project, other than yesterday? It's all, it's all yesterday.
He hasn't done the architectural designs yet, waiting on approval for changing from C2 to C3, because he's not gonna spend the money to do that unless he knows he can move forward.
But if it's a contractor's office, he would have to come back anyway.
Anyway.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm trying to figure out how we can work this out, where it's, we can give you what you need and we're not opening the door for used car lots or car lots to pop up out there or any of this sort of thing that are contentious to areas. We deal with these quite often.
Yes, ma'am.
And they will bring the neighborhood out. There are certain zoning, zonings, there are certain things that people do on zonings that we have a lot of opposition to. So, I'm trying to figure out a way that we can accommodate the applicant's request here and lock it in for that use and so that in the future, you don't have a convenience store pop up and you got people in adjacent, your neighbors complaining about it. That's just my, that's all I have for the conversation here, is just that. I don't know where we're going with it, but that's my input.
Yeah, you're gonna get a chance to come back up after we listen to the other people in favor and the people that aren't in favor, that you get a chance to come back up for rebuttal. So, nobody else has any questions for them.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, just a clarification to this gentleman. You did say that this space was also used for office space?
Yes, so there will be four individual spaces and there'll be an ADA-compliant bathroom and an air-conditioned office space. Someone can work, use that as their office.
Okay.
See, that'll have to come back under special use, under C3. See, that's the problem with these contractor's offices. I think they're missing, I think they're missing sound. That's it.
Okay, so, we're gonna hear from more people than you're gonna get a chance to come back up.
No problem.
Just a second and it'll give us a chance. We can't really deliberate on the motion until we have a motion on board. So, right now, we're, we kinda gotta hear from the public and then you're gonna get a chance to come back up for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Bless you.
Okay, anybody else speaking in favor of this case can come to the podium. Okay, see a nine. Anybody speaking against this case can come to the podium. Okay, see a nine. Okay. What do you want to do, Board?
I want to, can I ask another question?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Jean.
Yeah, we can bring him back up, too.
Mr. Jean, can you restate for us one more time so that we're all clear? Because this application says C2 and it says the C3. Am I correct?
Right.
Okay. Can you clarify for us what portion of this application is C2 and what portion is C3? Why the two, first of all, why the two different designations for zoning on this one application? And then, secondly, what would have to happen if we were to approve this, given the request for what he's gonna use it, what the owner's gonna use it for, which appears to be a construction office that's gonna have storage and some office space?
Okay, first of all, there's already a C3 up in the corner.
Okay.
He's asking to extend that C3 down over the C2 that's existing now.
Stephen, let me ask you. Please, make, once again, your, the C2 designation allows for a contractor's office by right?
No.
C3 also does not-
C3 requires a special use permit.
Okay, but C2 does not allow a contractor's office at all?
No, it does not.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to get him to state, Lauren, so that we would all know. So, I'm just-
And Mr. Jordan just brought me an example of what he's wanting to do and this particular district is IMU. So, we usually see these in heavier areas. Or it could be OR, which also allows it. C4 allows it by right. So, you're basically looking at a C4-type use or light industrial use when you're talking about contractor's office.
That's why I want to know what the purpose of the C2 is, Lauren, because I can't figure out, I mean, it says C, oh, it says C2 to C3. I'm sorry, I missed that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm thinking it was split zoning.
Yes, C2 now and it wasn't up to zone to C3.
Gotcha. Now, does he own the C3 existing lot?
Yes, ma'am.
You do, he does.
And there was something stated on the record a moment ago about the property not being residential to the south. The use is a non-conforming use, but the actual zoning is residential. And that's what we were pointing out in our report.
Okay, I'm sorry for the confusion.
That's what you see on the map.
I'm thinking.
Any more questions for the applicant? Marcy?
Nope, I think I'm good. Oh, wait, I do have one other thing. The two buildings that are on that site, you did say they are planned to be removed when you develop the whole site?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, one more clarification. So, if this C3 is given today, the applicant will still have to come forward for a special use permit, is my understanding?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Are you clear on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Okay, I will make a motion. I move that we approve the change from C2 to C3.
I'll second.
Any discussion, Board?
No.
Okay, motion passed by majority of vote of members present, five yeses, one absent.
Thanks very much.
You made the first hurdle.
We'll be back.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sorry for the confusion.
Sorry it took us a while, we've been kinda going back and forth on it.
Verification.
Okay, case number 25-5, BAP variance, onsite development standard. The applicant, please come to the podium.
Nobody?
Anybody can come up and speak on it and then somebody else can come next. I mean, the more we hear from you guys, the better.
Okay, Candace Boulay, 8285 Shirley Francis Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71129. I'm also nervous, so if my voice is shaky, that's why. Good afternoon, my name is Candace Boulay and my husband, Colby, and I, along with our two children reside at 8285 Shirley Francis Road. I'm here to respectfully request approval to proceed with the construction of a workshop on our privately-owned land. In the staff report we received, the proposed building was referred to as a shed. However, our plans have always been to construct a workshop, which is entirely different in both design and intent. Sheds are typically intended for light storage, while a workshop serves as a functional space for projects and long-term use. Our proposed build will include electricity, lighting and concrete foundation, making it a permanent high-quality improvement that enhances both the use and value of our home. When we purchased our home in October of 2024, one of the main reasons we selected this property was because the land provided enough space to safely and appropriately accommodate a future workshop. From the start, this project has been a part of our family's long-term plan. The lot size, layout and natural privacy make it ideal for adding this type of structure that complements both our residence and the surrounding area. Workshops are already common throughout this part of the parish. Within just two miles down Shirley Francis Road, several properties feature similar shops, demonstrating that our proposal aligns with the established character of the community. Our workshop, to be built by Ramsey Construction, will have charcoal wall panels with black trim and a matching roof, giving it a clean, modern look that blends smoothly with the existing landscape. I'm sorry. It will be professionally constructed and maintained, situated entirely within our property lines and located fully within our property boundaries and design, so it will not affect adjacent properties or nearby public areas. Although the parish classifies the portion of our lot facing Shirley Francis as the front yard, it does not function as such in practice. The area between our home and the road is densely wooded, creating a thick, natural screen that completely conceals our home and any potential structures from public sight. This wooded buffer already satisfies the intent of the UDC by preserving the visual character of the area and shielding development from public view. Additionally, our private drive is secured by an iron gate with brick walls, further ensuring that no part of our property or proposed workshop is visible from the roadway or any public right-of-way. The purpose of the UDC's accessory structure standards is to maintain aesthetic integrity from the public vantage points, not to prevent improvements that are fully contained and screened on our private land. Our workshop will not cause noise, traffic, glare or drainage concerns, and it will maintain the peaceful residential nature of the area. Denying approval based on visibility from private property rather than the public road would exceed the intent of the ordinance and unfairly restrict our reasonable use of the land. As for placement, our home faces west and the workshop would also face west along the northern side, positioned slightly forward with the house. It will remain fully hidden behind the wooded frontage. We initially explored building on the opposite, which would be the southern side of our property. However, CDE Construction evaluated the site and confirmed that the soil in the area is too wet and unstable to support a concrete foundation. Building there would likely result in structural failure over time. To ensure safety and compliance, we invested nearly $7,000 to clear timber and prepare a stable building pad in the northern area, the only feasible and secure location for construction. We also worked with Panola Harrison, who installed an additional power pole to supply electricity to the future workshop in full accordance with local safety standards. It's also worth noting that the nearby property, just a few houses down, has a workshop built in what is considered the front yard and clearly visible from Shirley Francis Road. This further demonstrates that our proposal is consistent with existing development patterns and does not introduce anything incompatible with nearby properties. The selected location allows us to build safely and responsibly without disturbing drainage, removing mature trees or without affecting neighboring parcels. The workshop will remain completely screened from the public right-of-way, fully upholding the purpose of the parish's onsite development standards to ensure safety, manage stormwater effectively, maintain neighborhood character and protect the public's visual environment. This addition is deeply important to our family. It will provide a safe, organized and secure space for the equipment and vehicles we use often, including our children's go-karts and dirt bikes, our family UTV, my husband's work truck and our lawn equipment. These items require covered storage to remain protected from damage and theft. Having a proper workshop will allow us to store and maintain those responsibly. We have made a significant investment in our home and have followed every step of the parish's process carefully and in good faith. We are simply asking for the opportunity to complete what we purchased this land intended to do, build a safe, well-constructed and fully-screened workshop that complements our home and community. Strict enforcement of the current setback in yard requirements would impose an undue hardship, as the only structurally sound and safe location for the building lies within an area already completely hidden from public view. Granting this variance would uphold the true purpose of the UDC, to protect public aesthetics and community character while allowing us to make a reasonable and responsible use of our property.
I've got a question for you. So, the main thing that we were looking at upstairs when we were getting the pre-briefing is where y'all want to put it? Who's right across that private driveway? The owner that this will actually look at? So, there's like, I don't know if you can pull a map.
Like, are you need their names?
Is the driveway to this building directly across from your neighbor's house, to the west?
Yes, the private drive is. So, the workshop in their house are facing you.
Your proposed driveway, is it right across from your neighbor's house?
Yes, it would be.
Okay.
Is, I know that, I don't see that neighbor here today. Does he know y'all are building a shop and everything?
Yes.
And he know y'all on good terms and everything?
Yes.
He's not gonna come down here and be mad at us?
No.
I mean, that's, I mean, we know he got notified, but that was the main sticking point on it, is that neighbor that's right there. And then, he wakes up every morning and he's looking at the shop, which, I mean, for me, it wouldn't be a big deal, but for some neighbors, sometimes it can be.
The other item I wanted to clarify was the gated entrance. It's just the two of you.
Correct.
You and your neighbor, the only two people that can actually drive down it.
Yes.
Unless you give someone permission to.
Yes, correct.
Okay?
And I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Newberg.
I wrote a note from the work session that said that there was gonna have to be a building removed. Is that correct? Did I write that on the right case?
It's the, they've got a covered storage that they have.
Are you aware of that?
Yeah.
Yes, it's just a shed that holds holiday decorations, but when the shop is built, that will be gone. Yeah.
I would just suggest you just have a good pot of coffee ready for that neighbor if he comes.
Question. You said the neighbor already has a building similar to that on his property?
Not the neighbor that would be facing our shop. It's a neighbor a couple houses down from us.
Also, on that private road?
No, not on that private road.
Okay. Okay, very good, thank you.
Any more questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Perfect job on your-
You did a great job.
Good job.
Really, really good. Anybody else speaking in favor of the application want to come to the podium? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I'm Brad Ramsey with Ramsey Construction. I've been to a couple of these meetings.
Can you give your address and a-
Our business address is 150 Frontage Road in Menden, Louisiana. Personal address, 234 Marble Place in Horton. I've been to a couple of these meetings and I understand the front yard thing and is there any kind of pictures that show like the layout of her land?
Yeah, we actually looked, we looked on Google Earth and we saw like up at the top, you have the pond.
Right.
It's a lot lower up there. And then, I know that it was suggested maybe south of the house.
Yeah.
But that's what she just said, that the soil's-
So, back in December of last year, when I went out there to meet Colby about this project, we had, originally, we were gonna put it back there.
Right.
South. And he had a contractor come out and they dug six foot down and it was just, the ground was no good to build on. It would just, it was just muck down there.
Jello.
So, kind of pumped the brakes a little bit and he had some work done in the front and he contacted me a few months later, said, hey, I'm ready to move forward this project. Come back out, let's take a look at what I've done. And immediately, when I got there, I saw that and I was like, all right, I've been through this before. And so, I already knew what was about to happen. But I understand like if we were in a neighborhood, we don't want to, we don't want a building in the front yard, where people are driving by and seeing a building in between the house. But this is very hidden by the trees and- But this is very hidden by the trees, and just with this amount of land he has, it kinda just makes sense where he put it due to the pond, the bad dirt, and it's just kinda, he's not the new, y'all said new driveway, he's, he's just turning off of his old, existing driveway.
Right.
Just into the shop. So, uh, I hope with what they've already invested in this, that we could get this approved for them so we can move forward. We followed the steps properly, doing the variance, the permits and everything. We didn't just go forth and build it and then deal with it later.
Right.
So, hopefully, y'all will grant them that.
Yes, sir. Any questions, board? Thank you. Okay, anybody speaking against the application, please come to the podium? Okay, seeing none. I move that we approve her to put her storage shop in the location that she has submitted.
I'll second with that stipulation of the removal of the building that has to be done in order for her to be compliant with the accessory buildings.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, motion passed by majority vote of the members present, five yeses, one absent.
Did you have a question?
We were just asking if that was a modification to the motion, 'cause you seconded the motion, and you did it, stipulated they remove the-
Right, which was what was said in the work session.
Yeah.
And I just assumed that was part of the package because it was spoke about in the work session.
She's just basically calling out the fact that the original motion didn't include that in-
Well, I can, I can second the second motion, so I'll, you can put me down as the second second.
Is I'm mending your motion?
Yeah.
Yes, and I just wanna make sure the record was clear.
Thank you. I got what you're saying, 'cause I was the second. I'm with you.
Okay, you're good to go. Five yeses.
Good luck.
Good luck. Okay, old business committee chair reports. I don't think we have any. We do have some new business, though. We need to put together a committee for positions next year.
Mr. Chair, we, to my knowledge, and I think I missed a meeting in here somewhere, maybe it was last month, we had a resolution that we were working on the, in the meeting before for the UDC master plan change. Where, where are we at on that? 'Cause I think Ms. Darnigan was out. Wasn't she out of the meet?
Yes.
Yes, I was out of town at the last meeting, so I will have a, well, my understanding is actually maybe we're not meeting next month, but whenever we next meet in advance, so that I will circulate the updated version to make sure that incorporates all the changes that you wanted, which focused on including references to the master development plan. But we'll have that at, I guess, the December meeting.
Okay. Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so-
One more thing. We've got two board members that their terms expire this month. Mine expires. I do intend to notify John Atkins that I would like to stay on the board.
Good.
And we've got one more, Mr. Humphrey.
Mr. Humphrey.
Yes.
Yours expires also.
Your what? Epstein?
Oh, he's extending.
Oh, extend. I was like, Epstein, what?
So, I guess, so was Epperson the one that, that put Damon up, or who, who does he need to contact?
Let me look into that and clarify. We have a, a regular session tomorrow, and I will be able to get some information on.
What district are you in?
Is it Barrail?
What district are you in?
Now, he's in District 1 with me.
That's Chris Crackman.
That's Chris Crackman.
Crackman wasn't in District 1.
No.
No, he wasn't there. It was Hopkins. Mr. Hopkins.
Mr. Hopkins. Okay.
Yeah, it was Hopkins. It was Hopkins, 'cause I think, did Damon come on at the same time you came on? 'Cause me and Constance got, me and Constance came on later on, and we were both, I think Epperson put up Constance, and Crack, and Crackman and Atkins put up me.
Presley is under Epperson then.
Yeah, Presley's under Epperson.
It might be, it might be Ms. Barrail. Commissioner Barrail.
Well, I know that they put four members on the board right away. You were one of them, Damon was one of them, Ms. Hart was one of them, and Marchie was one of them.
Okay, can we, well, how-
When it was a temporary board.
When it was a temporary board.
Mr. Chair, I have something else.
Sure.
We have been absent a board member. Ms. Darnigan, we have been absent a board member for the last three, three meetings, and I asked Mr. Clark to find out if she resigned or not.
She did.
She did.
Okay, so we, we need a replacement for her.
When did she resign, and did she do it in writing?
I found out today.
She did.
Okay, do we have a copy of her resignation letter?
Yeah.
Okay. So, then we, we need to renew two board members and replace Ms. Hart's-
And she was with Commissioner Gage Watts. That's who appointed her, I know for sure.
Changes, okay. All right. We'll bring that up to the, the commission.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we've gotta pick who's going to be on the nominating committee for the next positions next year. 'Cause we, we're not having a meeting next time.
And we're gonna-
And we're gonna have to do it the next meeting, I'm guessing, at the end of December, right? On who's gonna be starting the next meeting in January.
Yes, that's correct.
I'll, I'll volunteer to be, are you asking for volunteer? I'll volunteer to be on the nominating committee.
You can be the nominating committee, and we'll just all make comments back to you.
Okay, how about that?
That's easy enough.
What if I send out an email and just say, how do y'all wanna approach this? Do you wanna just say who has the interest in doing this and let it come back, 'cause it might be one person and-
If I may interject, just to clarify, the nominating committee is comprised of three members?
Yes.
Is that right?
It usually is.
Okay, so then, Ms. Newberg, your volunteer?
I'll be on it. I'll be on it.
Okay.
Okay.
And who else is the third one?
And Lauren. Mr. Marchie.
You need three.
And then we'll just put out an email. Normally, it's, normally we'll, somebody will get suckered in, let me put it that way. We'll have one person that'll reply back and say they're interested in whatever position, so it's pretty simple. We don't, we're not very competitive. We just want somebody to, to run the ship, so, okay. So, that's easy.
Yeah.
All right. I have one more thing.
Sure.
One more thing. Today is October 22nd. We will be not in here in November. And we're coming down to the end of the year, so if you have not, this is my, done your ethics training, make sure you get it done before December 31st. I, I'm now, know three people that have been fined by the Ethics Board for not doing their paperwork and training, and it is not a nice penalty. These are big bucks. So, please, if y'all haven't, make sure you get that done.
Okay. Not only your training, but your tier-
Well, that's May 15th, but, but, yeah. And by the way, just, because this calls somebody a penalty. When you're, it took me forever to figure this out, and me, I'm just a slow learner, but when you're filing that financial, you're filing for the prior year. So, in '25, you're filing for '24. They only sent it back to me three times and said, "We already have something on file." And I kept putting, this is for '25, but they wanted, they only needed it for '24.
Yeah, they wrote to me and told me I used the wrong form.
There you go. So, you're filing in a, you're filing for the year behind.
You used the wrong years' form.
And that actually got somebody a penalty. They thought it was the current year, and they skipped a year because, yeah. So, just know that.
Okay, so we'll move on to director's report. Jean?
Do not have a report today?
Nope.
No report today.
I like that. Okay, public comments? Nobody out there? Okay, chair, board comments?
Oh, I have one. I'm sorry. I do have one. I have something else. This was odd. I watched the meeting from the public, from the commission the other day. I don't know if y'all saw. It was this week. One of, it was Ms. Anderson's case that came in today. There is a very, very, what's the word I wanna use? An, a formal-looking document that's being perpetuated through email under Alan Clark's name, where they're asking for people to pay for their permits. And Ms. Anderson reached out to me. She received a $4,900 bill with a link to pay her, pay her, her permit, her fees associated with what was happening with the MPC. And so, that's going around. There's only like a few letters difference in the email that it's coming from. Like Chris, Commissioner Crackman said, instead of it saying shreveportla.gov, it said something like US something gov. So, if y'all, if people call y'all, and I'll let you, you get in on that, 'cause you need to tell us the way.
This actually has been happening for quite some time. It just hasn't been happening with this board. What the scammers are doing is they're going into the agenda. They're pulling up all the information. Of course, we have information on the applicant. We have all kinds of information that's there. It's public record. They're taking that record, and they're putting together a, going to our website. They are pulling off loados. They're pulling off, and they're putting together what looks like, if an untrained eye, looks like a legitimate invoice. We have been putting language in our correspondence with applicants, letting them know that there's, that the only legitimate bill would be coming through my government online portal. If you're getting anything that is, that is coming through an email, that is not coming from us. This, this has been happening for some time in the city, and that has been turned over to the white-collar crime unit. And so, every time we get one in the city, we turn it back over to them. We probably need to get with the sheriff's officers on this. There's just, this board, the first time it's happened with this board, but it has not happened with the ZBA board yet, but it has happened with the MPC board. And so, we've been trying to make sure that applicants are aware that, that don't trust anything that's not through that system. That we, we do it through MGO. It's paid through that same port hole. And especially when it says it's a wire transfer that they're seeking. That's another big red flag when you see wire transfer. That, that's not the way we do business here. We have, you can pay by credit card, or you can pay in person here at the cashier, here at 505 Travis.
Yeah, it looked real legitimate. I saw it, so just to pay something.
I looked at it too, and then the only thing that caught my eye is, wait a minute, they don't charge for all of those things in an application? So, I knew something was crazy there.
Well, that's why I told her to call, because I said, "There's no way that this amount's right." And I've, I've never heard of anything costing this much in our board. So, anyway, thank you for that, Stephen.
Okay, famous last words, Marchie?
All right, I move we adjourn.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank y'all.